What is good?
You're on record.
I'm sorry, John.
You want?
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec. of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Berkowitz.
I'm here.
Mr. Petty.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Chairman Grignani, Chair Woman Grignani. We have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart. All right.
Mr. John, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lamontowicz, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Next you.
Application 24:61, Greg Ferrante.
Can you, can you, you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You can have a seat. Just make sure you use the microphone.
Okay.
Building cottage?
Building cottage.
Please go ahead. What you ask?
Greg Ferrante, Rebrook Lawn Drive, Marshfield, New Jersey. I'm here on a part of, I have a variance for my porch. I'm trying to add on to my house with an addition as well.
Is the porch going to be open?
The porch will be open, yes.
No sides, and you agree not to put any closure?
That's not enclosed, no.
And you agree not to do that?
Yes.
This case, he meets all setbacks, he's covered, he's slightly over, but it's no big issue.
It is a minimum request.
Yeah, they are. Are there any questions from the board of this applicant?
No.
Anyone in the audience have any questions to this applicant and his testimony? Yeah. Someone like to frame a resolution, please?
This is a minimum request, uh, that being a good citizen and serving the community with high development, so I'm in favor of this. Uh, let me draw the application, uh, 24:61, Greg Ferrante, 3 Brooklyn Drive, block 168, lot number 49, zone R-Dash 3, to issue or grant SE variance to construct a covered, covered porch, alter or replace 222 square feet, landing stairs and walk contrary to section 430-Dash 35, column 10.
Second?
Second, Berkowitz.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes. Application is approved. You will be notified and once you get your approvals and we agree, approve your applications, you have 10 days that you will be getting your, uh, the paperwork and you can come in for your construction and instructions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Enjoy the holiday.
You as well. Thank you very much.
Application 2462, AW Contractor LLC, 171 Old Bloomfield Avenue. Okay, thank you.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you state your name, spell your last name, please? And how do you spell that last name? Want to put your appearance on? Do you want to put your appearance on the record?
Yes, thank you very much.
David Pennella, on behalf of the applicant. My proceed. You may. Mr. Vasquez, um, who do you work for?
Um, AW Contractor.
And, and are you a principal in that company?
Yes, I do.
What does the company do?
Um, build new houses.
Okay. Buy old houses and turn them over either by improving them or, or knocking them down and building new? How long have you been in business?
Uh, 14 years.
Have you done any work in Precipiny before?
Oh, yes.
Would you move a little closer to the microphone?
Sure.
Can you pick it up? Me or?
It will kind of.
Both of us?
It will. They're wireless.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Approximately how many homes? Do you have an idea of how many homes you've done in Precipiny before?
About 10.
Okay. Did you come to buy 171 Old Brookside or Bloomfield Avenue, excuse me, in Precipiny?
Yes, I did.
And did you make application to, uh, pull a new house on that?
Yes, I did.
And what happened when you made the application?
Um, zoning, uh, is approved, saying, uh, the width is not, uh, what they require, so...
So is the, is the zoning district 100 feet with?
Yes, zoning need, uh, a bit, uh, yeah, 100 people, yeah.
And, and what is the width of this lot?
Uh, 79.5.
Okay. I have an exhibit, I'd like to.
Sure. And that was not part of your initial submission, correct? Right, so that'll be A1.
A1, please. Thank you.
Mr. Vasquez, I'm going to show you what's been marked, uh, A1 before the board, and I'll ask if you can identify it.
Yes, this is the house, A1.
Did you take that picture?
Yes, I did.
And does that fairly and clearly and accurately depict the house as it looks today?
Yep.
Okay. And how would you describe the condition of that house?
It's, uh, very old and it's ugly, but, uh, neighborhood.
And is it pretty much a knockdown?
Yes, absolutely.
And that's the best way to improve this, this property?
Yes.
Okay. What do you intend to, uh, improve it with?
Building a new house for a better look for the neighborhood.
I'd like to mark this as A2.
This wasn't part of the submission?
Okay. Mr. Vasquez, I'm going to ask you to look at what's been marked A2. Can you identify this?
Yes, this is the house what I'm planning to put over there on 171 Old Bloomfield.
And how many pages does it consist of? Three.
Three, yes.
And, and does it truly and accurately depict, uh, the house that you want to build? It shows the front, side, and back elevations?
Yes.
Uh, what do you think of this house compared to the other house, but by way of aesthetics? Does it look better?
Absolutely, yes.
How do you think it'll help the neighborhood?
Um, improve the look, you know, since better.
Okay.
I'd like to see surrounded homes in the area.
Now, but this, this particular house looks fairly large. If you put it on this lot, will you meet all the setback requirements, the front, the back, and the sides?
Yes, absolutely.
And you'll meet the coverage?
Yes.
Is there, is there anything other than the width that would be at odds with the zoning ordinance?
No, just the width is probably right now.
And the width is an existing issue, correct?
Correct.
And you, um, the houses on either side of you, or, excuse me, the lots on either side of you, do they have houses on them?
Yes.
And is, would it be possible to acquire a strip of land to bring this into compliance, your property into compliance?
No.
And, and that was because that there, they have the bare minimum of a yardage also?
Yes, they have the same situation.
Can I interrupt one second? The houses to either side are the same width as this one?
Uh, no, it's a little wider. The new one will be a li, uh, wider.
But with, but within the setback?
You misunderstood. You have a lot that's 75 by something around.
Yes.
Lots on either side of you, how wide are those?
Um, about the same, 79.
In fears, yeah? Alright, so they couldn't buy land from them anyway?
No, no, I can't.
So it's an isolated lot, no way you can cure the...
I'm having trouble hearing him.
It's an isolated lot, there's no way you can cure the deficiency.
I can't cure it.
Right.
Can, can, can we know why?
Do you have any questions, uh?
Have you completed?
Yes.
Have you completed your testimony? Does the board have any questions of this applicant?
Uh, wha, you know, why this big house is needed in the large size? Do you have any reason?
Yeah, I guess different zone where, uh, require a hundred feet wide. Other, other, other properties, I, I used to build a 60, a 70, but for some reason, this one, the requirement is 100 feet wide.
Yeah, I think he's asking, asking a different question. He's asking, why is the house so large and why didn't you make it smaller? And I'd assume if I could partially answer is that there's an economic reality to these houses, uh, being replaced. It costs a lot of money to knock something down to buy the initial house, and then you need to have some return, obviously, to the developer. So there is an economic, uh, issue driving this in part. The other, uh, consideration is it's, it's not so big because it fits all of the zoning requirements. Every setback is, is taken care of. The lot just happens to be a little narrow.
Well, the case really doesn't involve what the house is going to look like at all. It, all it involves is whether or not you can build on an undersized lot. The, this exhibit, I don't think the board's going to approve or disapprove this house. But you're not asking.
No, we're not asking.
You're not asking for any bulk variances other than a pre-existing condition, period.
That's right.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board to this applicant?
I had one, but I forgot. Oh, the, the, the houses on either side of you, would this, would this house fit in aesthetically with the two houses that are on either side? Or is that going to stick out like a sore thumb in the neighborhood?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question.
All right, is this going to be? I'm sorry, Bernie.
Is the house that you're going to build similar to the houses that are already there, that are next door?
Um, no, this one will be a two-story house, and, uh, the other ones, I only want two or one story.
Oh, and it's still one-story?
Yeah. But if I'm not wrong, there is a couple houses down, uh, somebody else is applying, is applying to build a, a kind of house over there.
You don't own any of the adjoining lots, right? You just own this spot?
Yes.
All right, I have nothing else.
What is the increase in impervious cover with the site?
It's within the, it meets the coverage. I don't have the, the calculations in front of me, but it does meet, does meet the zone.
Yeah, I'm not asking for lot coverage, I'm asking for the, for the purpose of stormwater.
Right.
Because Precipiny has, would probably qualify this as a minor development for stormwater, which is a process that has to happen. Storm, uh, dry wells and drainage systems.
Yes, Steve, um, Smith from Jamin Engineering has prepared the plans which were submitted with the application, and that does, uh, address that issue, and there's a proposed dry well in the rear yard.
Okay, I have other questions, Mayor Chair.
Anyone in the audience have questions to this applicant on his testimony only?
I'm sorry.
Just asking if there was anyone in the audience.
Oh, okay.
That has a question.
Pardon my hearing.
That's okay. It's quite all right.
My son signed me up to go for hearing aids. I haven't gone yet.
You'll get a desert Christmas gift, I'm sure. Anyone, uh, on the board would like to, uh?
Yeah, this is a...
Oh, yes. Anyone?
This is a good application, uh, that is an enhancement to the neighborhood and all the stuff, and, uh, yeah, the applicant has a hardship to find a neighboring place to acquire and make it, uh, in compliance. However, this is a, uh, good application, I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Can I go with the?
Uh, yes, please. Resolution?
Application 24:62, AW Contractor LLC, 171 Old Bloomfield Avenue, block 693, lot number 16 dot 02, zone R-Dash 3, to issue or grant SE variance to construct a new two-story single-family dwelling with covered front porch and open deck with stairs contrary to section 430-Dash 35, column 3.
Second from someone, please?
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes. Application is approved.
Thank you very much. So it's a process that you will draft a resolution?
Yes.
For passage at your?
And then you can apply for the zoning.
January meeting?
Probably January.
Probably the January meeting.
Do you know what date that is?
I think it's the 8th, right? Don't it? Is it the 8th?
Must be, must have been.
Yes.
Uh, the 1st, January 8th.
The 8th.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, happy new year.
Application 24:63, Andrea Goslin.
Raise your right hand, please. Are you both going to testify?
Uh, just in case he has something to say.
Sure. Just swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, state your name, spell your last name, starting with you, please.
Andrea Goslin, G-O-S-S-E-L-I-N.
You, sir.
And Robert Goslin, G-O-S-S-E-O, content.
Thank you. Make sure you use the microphone.
Sure. We're just looking to replace our existing fence that's chain-linked with the vinyl fence.
That's it?
That's it.
The fence, the fence is too high for the, it's in a front yard. Right, well, it's.
Front, but it's way set back from the corner.
Right. Well, the, the way zoning is, anything that's part of your lot, that, that butts a street is a front yard. Doesn't make any difference with the way the house faces, whatever you, a lot of people just hate it, it's crazy, but that's the way the rule is. So you need a variance for a fence in the front yard. The chain link, I assume, was there when you bought the house?
Yes.
And it also encroached into the right of way, you're removing that. The, the way the plan is drawn, you're going to pull the fence back from the curb by, to be about 10 feet. Right now, your chain link is probably five or six feet from the curb.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So that's moving back. Do you anticipate putting this fence? One side you have coming off the corner of the house and down to the street, then you're going to go along the street?
Yep.
And just stop there? Are you, do you think you might be carrying it back?
No, there's already a tall fence there between us and the neighbor house, so that we were just going to leave.
Going to butt up to that, that's?
Yes.
Because if you were, you, that's, put it in now, it's part of the variance.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
But you're not going to.
No, we're just going to go up to that.
Trying to say that the, coming back could be a friend to you.
Sure.
Any questions from the board of this applicant? Anyone in the audience has any questions to this applicant's application? See none?
Same thing as the, this number request?
Any comments either for or against the application?
Anyone have any comments for or against this applicant from our audience?
Mr. Ready?
Yes, uh, this is a reasonable request, uh, they are replacing the exist one, existing one with the new one. I'm in favor of this. Can I go?
Please.
Application 24:63, Andrea Goslin, 6, Reville Court, block 713, lot number 10 dot 02, zone R-Dash 4, to issue or grant SE variance to install a four-foot-high solid vinyl face with one-foot-high lattice on top, total five-foot-high fence contrary to section 430-Dash 11A and B.
Second, please.
Second, Berkowitz.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes. Application is approved. You will be notified, and at that time you can, uh, go for your permits. The application will be approved at our next meeting, which is January 8th.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Happy holiday. Five minutes?
It'll be adjourned at 7 o'clock, case?
Yeah, I need it. Someone make an adjournment, please, for the se, a 7 o'clock meeting? Second?
Second, ready.
Okay, you're on record.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec. of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, please.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Yes.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Uh, Chairwoman Grignani.
Present.
We have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz. And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Would you please join us, stand? Pledge allegiance in the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, and just as it is. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on something other than what is in our agenda this evening? See none?
Uh, resolutions, application 2458, United Methodist Church, block 764, lot 35. Apologize, um, just my resolution. Uh, would anyone like to make a motion?
Some more.
Second, please.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes.
And our final resolution, application 2054, Danny Reel T., block 770, lot 1. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Some more.
Second, please. Second?
Yes, I'll second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes. Thank you, Nora. Application 24:42, Andres... Newby, 9 Mohican Place.
Newver?
Newver, okay.
Can you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Uh, state your name, spell your first and last names, please.
Andres Newver, A-N-D-Y-R-E-S, and the last, the user is N-G-Y-B-I.
Great, thank you. You can be seated, just make sure you're close to the microphones, okay?
You're on, please.
Sir? Yeah, it's for, um, a variance on the construction of a front porch, an eight-by-eight space, um, right in the front by the main window, upstairs.
Will that porch be enclosed or be open?
Uh, there will be an opening, uh, close to the, uh, stairs in the front and the front door.
Well, it's going to have walls?
Uh, it's just going to have.
Is it closed in?
It, there's going to be a small entry on the side, um, but around there'll be the four posts.
So it'll be open?
So it'll be open, yeah. Yeah, there'll have an opening space.
So it's just a space to have outdoor, go outside?
Correct, yes.
Can you get to it from the house without going outside? Are you going to have a door from the, whether, from an existing home or into the porch?
Uh, once you leave the front door, it would be located on the left side, so you'd have to leave the house before you get to.
Okay.
The actual spot, yeah.
It's for the impervious coverage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's there now, grass?
Yeah, dirt, actually. We, we took up the grass, it's just dirt.
Dirt there?
Yeah.
The board have any questions?
Uh, I have a question. The concrete pad in the back, what's that used for?
Uh, actually, right now, is, is it the area separate from the house itself?
Well, right in the back next to the shed.
Yes, yeah, that area. Um, it's not really used for anything. We do have a, a table right there at the moment and two chairs. That's about it. It's hard they ever use. It's not connected to the house itself, therefore we hardly use it.
I didn't know it wasn't being used and you took it up, it might.
You wouldn't need a variance.
You wouldn't need a variance.
Oh, it, we love the front view.
Okay.
The back, yeah, it's kind of enclosed. There is that open lot next door, but there's fencing in the back, the neighbor's fences in the back with the shed.
No, but, no, I'm going to say, if the pad wasn't there, then you wouldn't need a, a variance to put the porch up by you.
Correct, right, exactly. And then, yeah, and there's no, there's no entry through the back door, so there's that distance.
You would have sufficiently less coverage.
Exactly.
But you use that pad to just hang out in the backyard.
Have a cup of coffee.
No, actually, we never use it, that's the thing. It's, it's honestly too far. It's just back there, yeah. It's too far away because there's the side entrance and exit, and then there's a front entrance and exit. But we would just love to be in the front. If, if the house itself was bigger, then you're right, then we could actually connect it to that area in the back by the shed, but there's, it's not necessary, it's too far away.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
That's a different point.
I think the point that Mr. Berkowitz was making is that if you were to remove that concrete pad, you wouldn't have needed a variance to build your porch. You would have then been in compliance.
Right.
Because of coverage.
Yes, correct.
Because that's counted in the coverage.
Yes, right.
Anyone in the audience have, like to make a comment of this witness? Either for or against? Are there any more questions from the board?
No.
Nope.
Ready? You're on today.
Application 24:42, Andres Newver, 9 Mohican Place, block 526, lot number 11, zone R-Dash 4, to issue or grant a SE variance to construct a front porch contrary to section 430-Dash 35, column 30.
You make it, oh, I thought you were still giving your reasons, I'm sorry.
Done.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Uh, Petty.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Grignani.
Yes. Application is approved.
Application is approved, it will be, um, formalized at our next meeting, and at that time you'll be notified and you can go for your construction anxiety. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Happy, happy safe holiday.
Thank you, you as well, thank you.
Application twenty-four twenty-seven, Russell and Joan Frick, for Wildwood Trail.
Can you raise your right hands, please?
Sorry?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Quick, uh, you can sit down, can you, uh, state your name and spell your last name, please?
Russell Frick, F-R-I-C-K.
Joan Frick, F-R-I-C-K.
Thank you. Go ahead and tell us what you'd like.
We, um, applied for a variance to add a second car garage, a second driveway, well, expansion on the driveway and a patio.
Patio? You're also asking for a patio? Yes.
Well, how are you gonna construct the patio? Is it gonna be pavers or, since proposed, paper patio? Do you know whether it's gonna be what we refer to as dry-laid meaning, if we put a hose on it, the water would go down through it? Or is it gonna be grouted? Grouted means you would not be able to, the water would not be able to get through.
Yeah, the water would go down through.
That's the way you're gonna construct it?
Yes.
So if they put the resolution to prove this, the patio would have to be a dry-laid patio, you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. I assume the driveway is gonna be a standard dry wood, block top dry wood?
You don't have an existing garage at the present time?
One car garage.
I'm sorry?
A one-car garage, if you have a...
Yeah, very small.
The garage addition is gonna have the same siding or architecture as the house? Same, whatever it is.
Yes, it is, yes, yes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question of this witness on his application? See none? Anyone on the board like to, uh, have any questions?
No.
Not here, me.
Madam Chair, just two things, minor. Um, it looks like this will also qualify for a minor development for stormwater, so that would have to be reviewed by the township engineer. Also, it looks like the chain link fence across the back of the property is as much as eleven feet over the property line, so I would suggest that the resolution make note of that and, and, uh, make a point that the board does not, uh, and the board's action, if they choose to approve, will not legitimize that encroachment.
What is that, that's it? Are you aware of that? The fence is...
So do you have your plans in front of you?
Do you have your survey in front of you?
Yeah, you have that?
No.
Sorry, no, I didn't realize.
The plan, the plan shows that...
You borrow mine. So you, so you see what he's talking about?
We just moved in, you know, so we're not...
So it's...
Just wondering why the prior owner would build a fence eleven feet over the board?
Can you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry, just wondering why the prior owner would do that.
So if you see the top of that front page there?
Uh-huh.
You see your property line, and then above that is the fence. You see what Mr. Lamontelitsch is talking about?
Your property line is labeled with N fifty-six zero four zero zero W one hundred, and the double dash line under that's your property line. Above that, where it says chain link fence, that appears to be your fence, it's tough to tell, but just by looking around the property, it looks like that's your fence, and you can see it's on the other side of the property line.
There is a, a fence behind our fence with a public, public access. So there is like a public wa- access in the back of our property for utilities.
Okay, well, like, you know, it's, it's not, you know, the survey doesn't show that, but all, all it is to say that, basically, it's protecting the board, that if that person comes by and says, "We want you to move your fence," and you say, "No, the town approved it." It, that doesn't count, like, that's all I'm saying, is that so, we're not, the board is not okaying that, they're not making any comment on it. It is what it is, and that's all that's for, it's, that's just, just a protection for the board. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
What, what is this called, the, the, and we make a resolution? Yeah, right? How to put this? Just, no, just be, just, forget about that.
Okay, don't worry about that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll take care of that in the resolution.
Application...
Yeah, Mr. Johnson will take care of that in the resolution.
I'll take care of most of the...
Can I go with the...
Please.
Yep.
Application twenty-four, colon twenty-seven, Russell and Joan Frick, for Wildwood Trail, block number four thirty-five, lot number three, zone R dash three, to grant a C-variance to construct a one-story addition, driveway expansion and patio contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, column ten.
Second, please.
Second.
Berkelitsch?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
You guys are too fast.
You're approved? First, our meeting in January, we will approve your application, and at that time you will be notified, and you can come and get your zoning permits, okay?
Thank you.
Lots of luck, happy holiday.
And welcome, welcome to town.
Yes, yes, welcome.
Thank you.
Application twenty-four forty-eight, Dave and Tess Lewis.
Okay, can you raise your right hands, please? Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? State your names, spell your last names, starting with you, please, Ben.
Tess Lewis, T-E-S-S, L-E-W-I.
David, D-A-V-I, Lewis, I'm in U-I.
You can have a seat, just make sure you speak into the microphone.
Please?
I guess we're requesting a variance, um, we have a basketball court that was reported by my neighbors back here that, um, I guess I couldn't have a permit. Um, that was done over thirty years ago, uh, when we bought this house. One of Mr. Mossberg's trucks almost ran over one of my kids, and I was a terrible and, uh, he helped me secure a blacktop in the back, so the kids provided the back, the, the bikes in the back of my property. And I guess I was just notified that it's too close to the fence.
After thirty, after thirty years?
After thirty.
Thirty years, all, all these, may I add, if I can? Apparently, there's a, we never got a permit for our deck, I'll explain that in a second. And there's also on the other side of these neighbors that reported us, against the stone wall, there's a little violation of our patio, which I believe is not impervious, but there's something on that side as well. All these things are from nineteen, early nineteen nineties, right after we bought the house. And with the deck, when we bought the house, Mr. Mossberg got a CO uh, remarkably without a back deck. So you walked out our back door and there's a four-foot drop, we had little kids. So we slapped that deck on there as fast as we could. I guess we didn't get a permit, but they were supposed to do it.
I thought they didn't.
Yeah, anyway, that's a little background on all these violations, I'm not quite sure, but I guess this is good that we're here, because when we go to sell the house, there'll be no issues with any of this stuff.
You want to make it in a compliance?
Pardon?
Want to make it right.
Yes, correct.
What triggered this?
I think one of our neighbors on the one side, I don't know, I don't know.
Did you like the basketball court?
I don't know.
After thirty years?
Honestly, I don't know why we're here, but...
Looks like we're gonna find out.
Yes.
I guess so. Never been a complaint in the whole thirty years from this particular neighbor about any of this.
Is the court, the basketball court still being used?
No.
Well...
The youngest is twenty-nine.
For the grandchildren.
The grandkids, though, you know, when they're here, yes.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions of this application?
What for?
Please come forward.
This is, well, this is the time...
The time that you, you, you will be asking questions of their testimony only. If you have other issues, it will be afterwards, not now.
Well, as regards to their testimony...
But hold on, if, if you're gonna ask questions, you need to come up and use the microphone.
Yes, please come forward. Please, we'd appreciate it, yes, thank you. Does every board member have the pictures?
Stay, stay at the microphone, so that when you answer the question, you can be picked up by the microphone.
All the members have them. Yes.
And so this is your opportunity to ask questions of the witnesses. If you have comments that you wanna make, either in support of or against the application, there'll be another point in time, as soon as we're done with questions, where I will swear you in, and then you can make comments.
Okay.
Okay, you understand? Okay, so do you have any questions of these witnesses?
No.
Okay.
Does the board have any questions of this witness?
The basketball court, is there any light?
Light?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so the basketball's only during the day?
Correct.
Okay.
And now his grandkid uses a few guys, I guess.
My, my grandkids live in Puerto Rico, so it's one-day visit.
Okay.
Really not used so much for a basketball court anymore, it's kind of, that basketball hoop is kind of broken down. It's just a place to ride bikes and play.
When they show up.
When they show up.
All right, at this time, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak in support or in opposition to this application? Please come forward.
Yeah, just make, just make sure they can pick, get picked up on the microphone, so if you wanna stand to the side, that's fine.
I, I'll stay here, if...
Okay, can you raise your, are you gonna, are both of you going to speak?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then both of you raise your right hands, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Patrick Pinto, P-A-T-R-I-C-K, P-I-N-T-O, thirty-four Battle Ridge Road, Mars Plains.
Yeah?
Patrick Pinto, G-P-C-L-V, Pinto, P-I-G, thirty-four Battle Ridge Road, Mars Plains.
Okay, great, you can sit down, just make sure the microphone is picking you up, okay?
Um, may I ask one?
Please.
So we moved into the property in nineteen ninety-two, that's when Powder Mill Village was developed, and we had no drainage problems whatsoever. Our problems did begin when the basketball court, the yards are in two tiers, a top tier and a lower tier, in your particular case, they have like a sloping, uh, area that's all mulch. So when they put the basketball court in, I'm guessing that the area that they covered, we, we know it's twenty-five feet width, we don't know the length, but it's an area of about a thousand to fifteen hundred square feet that was covered. And that's when we initially started having problems, where when it would rain, there was a natural drainage, there was a little ditch between the two yards where they adjoined, that would drain, and we would get puddling at the bottom of, of the corner of the house. Let it go. Subsequent to that, we put up a six-foot wooden fence. Um, they planted on the other side of the fence, they planted four pine trees, evergreen trees. Why is that relevant? Every year, they would mulch that area, as well as the hill. Every year, the mulch got deeper. There's now about this much dirt on the other side of the fence, it's caused the fence to rot, it's caused the fence to pull out, it's actually an eyesore, but we can't take the fence down, because if we were to take the fence down, all that dirt could come tumbling, the entire yard tumbling, but if you give it a feed of dirt. So we're not, we have not been able to remove the fence. And with those trees and with that mulch, every time it rained, the property is pitched, we're on their north side, south to north, so, and we're lower than they are, so when it rains, the rain comes down into the mulch, drains into, into our backyard, our side yard, and with it comes a pile of mulch. So every time it rained, my husband would go out with a couple of buckets and a shovel, and shovel up the mulch and remove it. And yes, we did not make a lot of complaints, we tried to be nice neighbors. There was a patio on the lower deck, which now is a much larger patio than it was before. That, and the fact that there's now a drain pipe, a four-inch drain pipe, which we did talk to them about, they told us they were gonna fix it, they put a couple of rocks and some tape on it, but they have this drain pipe that runs across their property, and it's headed right for our property, right towards our fence, about six, eight feet in length, where that discharges. In addition to that, there's two drain pipes on the side of their house, front and back, that also drain towards our house. Our concerns really started, real serious concerns, started about a year and a half, two years ago, when we had some heavy down cores, large amounts of water started coming. So as it's coming through the fence, down into the back corner, I end up with literally three to four inches of standing water in my backyard during the rainstorm. I apologize, I didn't know how to get information to you. I have photo documentation and many videos of all of this. As you can see, the water literally pours through the fence, down, and then alongside of our, the side of our house, we have a little garden there, it's like literally a river that runs. But the concern really started when that water that was running down the side of the yard is going down our foundation, our garage floor is about four feet lower than that, and it's going into our garage, and then running out of the garage and down the driveway. It's also, as it comes down the side of the house, it turns a corner, there's a little stairwell there, and that water runs through, it's blocked stairwell, it's cement on it, is running through that. Our concern is that if this condition is allowed to continue and exist, we're gonna have some structural issues. That's why we're here.
Is there a possibility of you two, your neighbors, or any possibility of getting together so that you may possibly come to an agreement to fix this problem?
There's not a chance in heck, no.
Why? Have you tried? Have you spoken to them?
Yes, I have. Yes, I have.
I just wanna mention that in thirty years...
Hold on, hold on.
In thirty years, they have not once, and I mean not once until twenty twenty-three...
Excuse me.
Not once, once, until twenty twenty-three, have they brought this up, not once. So, you mean to tell me twenty-eight and a half years, all of a sudden this is now a problem? All of a sudden this gushing water and this destroying of your house now is a problem?
I've sent him photographs, I've sent him videos, I've spoken with his wife, asked her what? I texted him.
Okay, just...
Please.
Just, just...
I want you to do something.
Just, yeah, you know, I'm dumb, I'm dumb, have it.
We have to go, we have, we have to go in a certain order, in order to preserve the record, in case this goes any further than tonight, okay? So, um, right, were you done with your testimony?
Um, I have some questions. But there, there's, before you answer that question, there's a process the township is in. I don't know if it's too active, too active right now, but there's a mediation process. And several years ago, I think we had two or three cases that the different parties sat down and discussed it. And I think that's probably the most productive thing we have here, because this board isn't designed to be a mediation board. It's not like we're gonna figure out how to make this everybody whole. That's a process that's through a mediation process, and that's not all we are. So I, my suggestion to, I think, Bill, is the board suggested we sign up for a mediation session with the township and see what happens.
Does that pro... Nora, are you aware if that process is still available? Is that, is that something you're aware of?
There used to be a, a mediation resolution group to municipal court.
Right.
I don't know if it's...
But I don't even know if that exists anymore.
But you, you were on the board, you had a couple of these, several years ago. I mean, it was really cats and dogs, it knows.
Well, I got my question, have you ever contacted the township engineer about this?
I have.
Has he been to the property?
I, I don't know, I know that...
Well, I, he came, I would think he'd know.
I don't know, no, no one ever came to my house and told me anything.
When did you contact the engineer, you remember?
About a year ago.
Okay.
I was just calling the township, I haven't called the township.
I think the township engineer needs to go to the property, to give us a report.
Yeah.
I was told somebody from the town was going out, but I don't know who or when.
Well, we can find out if they went or not.
She, they probably had the code enforcement officer go out, she made a complaint, that's who would have gone out.
Okay, we need the engineer.
They did.
Right, and they did do that, which I realized.
Are you at the property?
I don't know about the township engineer, if they did not come out to your property, if they didn't come out to your property, you should give them again, the township engineer, give them a call again.
So...
Have them come out.
To my property?
Well, both properties.
Because of the flooding. So they can, they can, you know, have it, understanding of what's going on. You're, you're complaining about the flooding issues. You should call them, let them come, have them come out on a rainy day. You know, they'll address the issues with you both.
I, I already did that. I already went, I spoke, called my house.
Okay, you said you called about a year ago and no one ever came?
No, to my house, they came to my house.
Was it the code enforcement officer or was it township engineer?
No.
Michael Regir?
Yes.
That's the code enforcement officer. I'm talking about the township engineer. Township, doesn't sound like the township engineer went to her house. Only the code enforcement officer who doesn't, has nothing to do with your water issues. He's there just to, you know, have things corrected, like they had, they, their items without permits. He's there to make sure they get the permits and things get corrected. But you should call the township engineer's office again so they can come out to your house, see what the issues are and, you know, work with both of you to get this addressed.
Mr. and Mrs. Lewis, there's, your neighbor has a concern about flooding. This board takes flooding concerns seriously. So it may be in your best interest to ask the board to carry this application until such time as you can get the town engineer out to your property to see if in fact there is a flooding issue and what you might be able to do to alleviate that flooding issue rather than-
I'm happy to, can I just make a couple statements? She did call, text me about a year, it was actually a year ago summer, that there was water, that she could hear water gushing. My father was very ill, he subsequently died. I was in Puerto Rico and I said to her, I'm in Puerto Rico, I don't know what I can do right now. She called me again. Said I hear water test, whatever. My son and daughter-in-law, what happened, they had the house, they had come to visit, but I had to fly to Puerto Rico to see my dad. It turned out that my husband had been watering the flowers and shut the hose by the, you know how you can do it by the handle, but not the, and the hose exploded. And that was water. Immediately, we shut it off and that was that.
Oh, that is like an accident.
Correct. And then I thought that I had solved the problem. That summer, because I wasn't at home, I spent four months in Puerto Rico, I didn't mulch, which I think also had with the rainy summer. Now, the fence between our two properties are wooden fence. Her fence is over 25 years old. It's wood and it's rotted. I know she blames my mulch for such a thing, but wooden fences after 25 years rot. Now, my, the fence is still there, so no mulch is going into her property at all. They have a koi fish pond actually next to these pine trees that somehow burned down one by one and we replaced it with evergreens so that no needles would go into her koi fish pond. And we never complained, we never did anything. So if she has a complaint, I, you know what? One time, one of my kids did something, broke a, a window. I left a note for her, I replaced the window and by expense. I am a good neighbor, I have no problem with any of my neighbors. I called them all about the situation. I'm happy to do whatever the board requests.
I think, I think Ms. Lewis, I think the suggestion-
Yes, that's fine.
Of Mr. Johnson.
No, no problem.
Then you'll, then the engineer will be able to assist you in determining if there is in fact a water runoff issue and if there is what might be done to mitigate.
Be great. I'm happy to.
So you're asking the board to carry this application until such time as you can have the township engineer out to your property?
Absolutely, okay.
So do you understand that-
Yes.
This application's going to be coming back on another date?
Yep.
That they're going to talk to the township engineer, determine if the township engineer thinks there is a water runoff issue and if so, how they might be able to address that?
I would just like to just make a little description.
You gotta grab the microphone.
You gotta get closer to her, pick up the microphone. So whatever you say, we can look at it later.
We live on the side of the mountain, okay, basically. Battle Ridge Road is way up on the hill on Route 10, Powder Mill, Powder Mill Estates. It's a very hilly area. From the road to the back end of our property, okay, there's about a 20-foot elevation increase in elevation. So you can, you can just get an idea of how much sloping there is on these properties, okay? The soil there on the mountain is about 50% rock. It doesn't, the soil does not perk well because of the rock content and it's very difficult for water to get absorbed into the ground. The basketball court that was put up in the early, in, in about 93, I guess, takes up over 1,000 square feet of natural drainage area in the backyard. I think it's closer to about 1,250 square feet, but they could tell you exactly how big the, this macabre pad is that they put up there. And it's at the very top edge of the property in the backyard. So water that hits that has no chance to soak into the ground because it's a, it's a pad, solid. The pad is not level either, it's pitched. It has a downward pitch from the south end to the north end of it. We're at the north side of Lewis property. So it pitches off and all the water runs towards our yard, our backyard.
I understand that. If, you understand that the, the application is not going to be decided today.
I do, we're coming back. Can I just, again, it's just a description of the problem. And the problem that developed, it's not just basketball court. We have an extreme water runoff problem there that comes out of the Lewis yard into our yard. Their, their house is at a higher elevation than our house. We, we are just about the lowest elevation on the whole block, on Battle Ridge Road. And I, I was able to cope with the runoff from the basketball court, okay? But then later on, they did another home improvement project and they put a patio on the ground on the lower level of their yard. Basketball, basketball court is at a higher elevation in the yard and then they have some flat backyard right in back of the house where they built a patio with stone, like flagstone type material on top of crust stone. And if you look at the square footage of the, the court and this patio, it's over 2,000 square feet of natural drainage that's been taken up that water cannot percolate into the ground there. So the water runs from their backyard down, down into our yard and floods the whole south, southeast corner of my, around my house. And all that water has got to come out between the two houses and get, to get to the street. But it's a torrent of water. I can show you videos, it's literally a waterfall coming out of their backyard into my backyard.
Well, possibly the videos can be shown to the officer when he comes to your home.
The engineer, yeah.
The engineer.
And one more thing I have to mention. They have a problem keeping their backyard dry themselves. And I think water actually that keeps their patio wet is it just doesn't percolate into the ground. So they put a four-inch drainage pipe along the, their patio and let it over, again, led that pipe towards my backyard. So they're draining their backyard into my backyard through the drainage pipe.
As I said, it's not true, but-
No, no, whatever it is.
Whatever it is, the engineer's gonna see it with his eyes and give us a report so we can know what it is. What it is.
No, no.
And I'm happy to have the engineer, okay.
That's okay, with all due respect.
When was the, when was the happening?
Yep, we're gonna carry the application to March-
The patio was built way after the basketball court.
All right, this application will be-
So I, I would say-
Nora, what is the date, please?
The application is being carried to March 5th, 2025.
Okay, folks, 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 we're wrapping up.
Wrapping up.
We're wrapping up there, okay?
Thank you. March 5th, this application, sir.
Ma, March.
Sir, the application?
March 5th is the next hearing on this application, March 5th. Please get in touch with the-
Contact the town engineer.
Well, I think, yes, I would, yes.
Yeah, you should contact the town engineer because it's mostly your property that he's gonna come onto. So you gotta give him permission to come up.
Right, so you're asking for the application to be carried and you're granting the board all, all extensions in order to consider your application, correct?
All right, thank you, thank you.
Do you understand you won't get another notice?
You have just, I wanna make sure I keep, I wanna make sure he has, he has this one.
You think so? That's what you-
Somebody wants to sell the house.
You have to, you have to be taken on video. Second.